Okay.
Uh-oh, we're done.
Okay, it's a minute after seven and I'm calling the March 25th Planning Board meeting to order. If anybody wants agendas, they're up here and I'd invite you to come up and get a copy right now. Okay. I'm going to ask whoever speaks tonight to come up to the podium but to also be somewhat brief because we've got a long agenda tonight and I'd like to get through it before we start having snowflakes hit our faces. So, the first item on the agenda are the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of February 26th and March 4th and table the March 11th minutes as I'm still fielding comments.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, are there any further comments on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. And we have one approval not required plan. The applicant is North Star Construction to subdivide three lots into two lots, in other words combining, located at lots triple zero, triple zero A, and 122 Barrows Road, East Falmouth. For the applicant, does anybody wish to speak on that?
Good evening. For the record, my... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's on.
Okay. For the record, my name is Jack Landers, call I'm a civil engineer in private practice. Worked, associates myself, worked in conjunction with the owner to basically take what is identified as three lots, but for all intents and purpose and intentions and purposes, really only function is two, and re-divide those three lots to make them a functional two-lot property. I think you'll see there's a lot of detail on the plan. We show the existing residence, the existing driveway. We also show the AC/EC area, the 50-foot offset to the AC/EC area. I think it's probably more information than you need, but we had to be thorough and be certain that when we did make this division, our client would be afforded all the opportunities that the zoning by law permits in terms of building on a lot and staying out of those areas restricted by our zoning by law. Other than that, it's got the area and frontage you need. Brian has highlighted those areas and hopefully I've answered your questions.
Okay. You have any problems with this, Brian? Any comments on it?
None.
Okay, does anybody on the board have questions?
This is a lot. Yes. Get the lot. This is it. That's the camera right there.
That one, yeah.
Okay, I didn't even look at that.
And it's okay. Any questions, comments from the board?
None.
Okay, then I would need a... To... A motion to endorse this plan. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain.
Thank you for your time.
So we move on to public hearing. The applicant is Charles M. and Thomas S. Crane. It's a definitive plan to subdivide 4.2 acres into three lots located at 38 Juniper Point Road, Woods Hole. Notices?
Madam Chair, nine of Butler's notices were sent by certified mail on March 4th. Five signed receipts were returned, one returned unknown. Publishing dates in the Falmouth enterprise were March 4th, 11th, and 18th, 2014.
And I'd like to mention to the board that, if you remember, we have seen this before but it was withdrawn, so this is a new definitive plan that we have in front of us. Who's here to speak for the applicant, please?
Excuse me, did you just call Crane?
Yes.
Oh, let me get the engineer.
Please, yes.
Just a little bit of deja vu, you've seen this before. This is a subdivision of some land at the southern end of the peninsula that lies between Little Harbor and Great Harbor and Woods Hole. And the... The proposal is that the... There's... The Crane family has owned this for a very long time and they would like to create a new lot around the existing lots, house that's way up on top of the... Of a hill that lies between the two harbors. They're also want to create a vacant lot and then one of the brothers is going to have Lot 3. The issue is that we filed an A and R and you didn't agree that these roads existed prior to the subdivision control law. So then we filed the definitive before, but there wasn't 50 feet between the corner of the road and this propping line. So we've gone through a couple of sketches, we met with Aladio and Brian, and the result was, this was the sketch that we showed, Aladio and Brian, and Aladio said that that was a suitable configuration of the road that avoided the zoning problem of having less than 50 feet. I have copies of those if you wanted it, that's the copy of the cul-de-sac. The issue that we have is that there's not quite enough room to fit this... The roadway width that we shown before. It's very constrained. If you remember, this is... This is Juniper Point Road, it's very beautiful, it's lined with very extensive trees, there's a retaining wall here and drops off. I see that Ralph has some of the original photographs I brought, I have some more. These are copies of exactly what I gave you before, but my Xerox... My printing machine decided to print them on both sides, so I don't have enough. And it also printed them in much larger size. My computer will not do what I want it to do.
Yeah, we'll send them down.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And that gives you an idea of, one, it's a very unique piece of land, it's very beautiful. And so, we drew the definitive plan, we also accompanied by a request for you to waive the construction requirements and the width requirements. I think you will remember that I presented this before, that there is a... When you come into Woods Hole and the steamship ferry is... The steamship terminal's right here, you actually drive what appears to be across Crane Street and Cowdery Road, and Juniper Point Road is private, but that's the major road that comes in, but there is a series of public roads. Little Harbor Road is public, Butler Street is public, and so, these roadways in this neighborhood are very narrow. The... Hinckley Road's a public road, it's only 18-foot wide. Butler Street is public and I think it's 24-foot wide, that's the total width. So what we've asked the planning board is to approve less... I'm sorry, less wide or narrower layouts than what you would traditionally do because, one, we don't have the space, two, it would be rather odd to have a 44-foot wide layout in an area that's all served by 24-foot wide layouts and 18-foot wide layouts. We also have asked you to waive the construction. We filed construction plans though that showed that the... I think you have copies of these, but if you want, I'll give you one. We show that there's going to be pavement. We're going to basically put a layer of pavement over the extension of Juniper Point Road at the cul-de-sac, if you could pass these down. There's plenty... I brought more than I need. And so, that was the only construction that we asked the board to do, I mean, the board to approve. The... We have... I have in receipt of some referrals, there's a referral from the town engineer, it's kind of extensive, but the bottom line is, he wants notes on the plan that these road extensions will never be petitioned for public road layout because they lack the width. We don't have any problem with that. He also asked... There were some comments about the details of the plan and... But the bottom line is, he seemed to support the waivers that were requested on the waiver request. The fire department filed a comment that there is a private hydrant that's right here. It turns out it's P1. It's the first hydrant ever constructed at Falmouth. It goes back to 1899. The water department has told us that it will not... They don't think... No, the fire department said it's built so low and so close to the ground that they don't think it could be used for firefighting today. So I've been in contact with the water department to... That you find out where we would put the water main. We're going to propose to the water department that we extend the water main here and come across and put a hydrant someplace in here. There's already easements that we can easily follow onsite that go back and forth. There are several private easements. For instance, there are some people that have limited rights over this, that's why, and that's a gravel road. Normally when we get a... I'm sorry, when we file for a subdivision plan, the planning board, when eventually it approves it, the construction's always guaranteed by either a performance bond or a covenant. And we would ask you to issue an approval that basically says that we cannot get a builder permit on Lot 2 until the construction of the road is satisfied and the water is put in however wet route it is so that the... So that Lots 2 and 3 can... I'm sorry, Lot 1 and 3 can be conveyed. That way, the... We think that's suitable because we're providing guarantee for the new lot where the other houses already exist. So, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have concerning the application.
Yeah, Paul.
Mr. McGrath, well, the last time we spoke about this, there was some discussion on the access roads and the ability of fire engines and so forth, equipment to come in, and there was some discussion about reorienting the roads to eliminate some of the private roads through private property. Can you address that, please?
I don't recall the specifics, but what the town engineer has asked for is 14-foot of pavement in... Or 14-foot of traveled surface in the new roads and 18-foot clear. So, that's in his referral.
But there was some discussion about changing the address of some of the property because of reorientation of roads.
What's actually going to happen is, this house is going to retain its number and this house is going to retain its number because by easement, this... If you've been here, this is the front door. So I have approval from conservation to build a driveway across here and it'll be through an easement. So our intent is that the access still... The actual practical access still come this way.
Thank you. Yeah, Doug.
I have a question. Could you explain to me the... How that cul-de-sac works? It's at the beginning of the entrance. How does that apply as a cul-de-sac? I don't understand that.
What it is, is we had to figure out some kind of configuration of the street lines that allowed us to have suitable frontage. The Falmouth zoning by law has a provision that says that if you have a curved line on a cul-de-sac, you can have up to three lots with less than... I'm sorry. You can have up to three lots with 60% of the minimum frontage. The minimum frontage here is 100 feet. So, what we're trying to do is avoid the... Problem with non-conformities here. If you remember the previous design, we had 100 feet on this side and 100 feet on that side, but the problem was, there was some section here that wasn't 50-foot. And so, it was creating a non-conformity. So, I met with Aladio, I gave him a series of alternatives and he said that was the best, he thought.
So that redefines the lot line so that there's more frontage, I see.
Yeah.
But so, I guess, I'm not familiar with the cul-de-sac not being at the terminal of the road, but I guess that's just a definition. Okay.
I think the thing to focus on is, we're going to end up with one more house on four acres, or all four acres.
Practical matter, the lot does end at the cul-de-sac and what goes beyond that are really just driveways.
Is that what it is?
Well, I mean, it's a practical matter. The pavement goes on and you serve the lots and no one... Mr. McGrath, can you point out, I see the frontage on the cul-de-sac, where... I'm sorry, I can't quite make out the frontage for Lot 1. Where is that coming from now?
Lot 1 is 100 feet on Hinckley Road, the Hinckley Road extension that we're creating.
I can't... I'm trying to see it on this plan, I'm having a hard time, there's so many damn numbers on it and lines.
That's this section here, they're going to extend that, it's no longer called a driveway, it's...
Oh, that's the lot line, this is this curved line?
That's a private road.
Not that clear to me.
I blew up and colored something for... To show... I think I showed Brian and Aladio that, that there's 100 feet along the sideline of the Hinckley Road layout. So what I'm saying is, along this sideline that I just drew my finger on, there's 100 feet, and that's the minimum frontage.
And then if I'm reading this plan right, when I'm looking at this cul-de-sac, I think it shows wetlands and a stone wall going right through the middle of the cul-de-sac. Am I seeing that correctly?
Yes, that's true. But I have asked for a waiver and the planning profile clearly shows that the only thing we're doing is improving the actual physical road layout for... Surface. Actual physical road surface, I'm sorry.
The actual physical road surface of Juniper Point Road?
Yes. The...
And Hinckley, where you're extending it?
I'm not proposing to do any construction, it's already crushed stone. It's been there a very long time, it serves for... It actually serves two other houses and another structure down at the end of the point. If we look... This is Hinckley, the Coast Guard Station, this is the area we're laying out. If you get down this road, you come... At the very end is the airplane house, and then back a little bit is a single-family house, a cottage, it's owned by the same people. And then this is a boathouse that's... That's connected with that pier there.
Yes, Mr. McGrath. Lots 1, 2, and 3 already been established by... By deed?
No.
No, they haven't been established yet.
No, we're here to get you to approve the lot.
Okay. So then, it looks to me as though the cul-de-sac has reduced the square footage of Lot Number 3 and Lot Number 2, but those square footages are not... That has not been indicated on this... This plan that you gave me here.
Oh, I will... What you need to look at is, those are graphics. Lot 2 is 42,600 square feet, Lot 3 has 40,300 square feet.
It did, it did on this plan here, but the cul-de-sac has taken off a proportion of that.
Well, Lot 2 has...
It has reduced this portion here, and this lot has been reduced by this portion.
But, no matter what, the remainder satisfies zoning in that I have 41,600 square feet on Lot 2 and I have 40,200 square feet on Lot 3. So, yes, that's the former plan, but, you know, this was withdrawn and this is what we're...
This is the old square footage and this is the new square footage?
No, what happens in Falmouth is, I have to subtract coastal wetlands and there's a dune that's all down by Hinckley Road, so I subtracted the area of the dune on this final plan. So I have 40,200 square feet of upland. Forty... Yeah, this is correct, 40,200 square feet of upland and this one doesn't have Lot 2, but it's 41,600 square feet of upland.
So who owns the cul-de-sac?
The cul-de-sac will be owned by the owners of Lot 1 and... I'm sorry, Lots 2 and 3.
Okay. And Juniper Point Road is a town road?
No.
It's a private road?
Juniper Point Road is private, Butler Street is public.
Okay, this is public. This is private. Okay, and you are proposing to pave the portion of Juniper Point that starts at the beginning of the cul-de-sac and ends at the cul-de-sac circumference? And with a caveat that says that that portion of the road will not be subject to town improvements or services such as plowing or trash pickup or anything like that?
No. What I have said is that we're going to put a new bituminous concrete layer on that road as I described. The town engineer reports that trash pickup will continue and so will plowing.
I thought you said that at some point, you were... There was going to be a covenant that indicated that any further... I guess I should say, any further development of Juniper Point Road would not be eligible for town services, is that what you said?
What I said was, the town engineer has asked us to place a note on the plan...
Right.
Saying that neither or... Both roads will never be accepted by the town as public roads because they don't meet the width and layout requirements. That's what I said. When you approve a subdivision, there's always some type of performance guarantee. It's usually either a covenant or a performance bond. And the covenant basically usually says that you won't convey the lots until the road improvements are completed. Since two of the lots already have houses, what I've asked for is the covenant only run in... Be imposed on the vacant lot, not on the two with houses.
The pavement that you're proposing, concrete pavement, will go how far down Juniper Point Road?
It goes just beyond the cul-de-sac.
Okay. So then it will refer back to stone?
It's already paved there.
It's already paved.
It's already paved there. It's... If you remember, somebody talked about how it was rutted, so that's why we're putting on the finish course.
Doug.
So, Mr. McGrath, if you could, where Juniper Point Road extends in the area of the cul-de-sac, I know it's all existing and it works fine for who's there, but... So now, if Lot 3 were conveyed, how would that driveway be reworked if these neighbors, say, didn't want to share a drive? Lot 3 would be okay to access that one-story house, but then, Juniper Point kind of cuts through part of Lot 3. Is there enough room to move that roadway over near the wetland if they needed to have access to Lot 2? If the neighbors didn't want to share? Or is there in place a sort of an access agreement?
Let's... 29 Juniper Point Road and 25 Juniper Point Road have a shared driveway and it comes down onto this. They have rights that were granted at the registry. So, they're going to continue to pass and repass. Their rights go that way.
Okay.
So, there's not... There's no reason to provide any provision to move that road because their rights are fixed on top of the traveled surface, so...
Okay.
And besides, we're constrained by the front yard setback plus... And besides, we're constrained, constrained by the front yard setback plus the wetland, there's no, there's no way to move it.
Right.
So, what you see is what you get.
And so, my point is then, if, if the people that own Lot 3, at some point in the future, don't want people in Lot 2 cutting across the corner of their property, how will Lot 2 be accessed? Unless there's a, unless there's an agreement or a covenant between-
Oh, there'll be an agreement. Well, that's a brother, this is another brother.
I'm just saying for future, though, in case of-
There'll be suitable easements to preserve that little portion of, of the pavement and the shoulder for the benefits of Lot 2 and Lot 1.
Let me ask a question.
Okay, thank you.
When I was in OSCE, Professor James Young said, "You can do anything in the world that you want to do with a contract." And I'm sure the buyers and the sellers here are going to take care of all the problems with contracts.
Rich, the question was asked of Mr. McGrath, and he should be answering it.
And he did.
Okay, does anyone else on the board have any questions? Are you satisfied at this point, knowing that this is the first time you've, you're looking at this plan, and we need to have a little time to study it?
It is a hearing, and we will have a discussion.
Oh, yeah. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to comment on this subdivision? If so, please come up to the podium and state your name. Okay, so, we will continue this to...
Is the board comfortable with the information we have at this point?
At this point.
Do we close it and have a discussion?
We need to have a discussion.
Yeah, so, if you're comfortable with the information we have, and I recommend you to close the hearing under advisement if you want a discussion. The information I have gathered-
Do you feel comfortable that you've got enough information to close the hearing at this point?
I do.
Okay.
I move to close the hearing. Can't go anywhere.
Okay, second.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
On that particular point, I had asked the chair's indulgence, only because when we've been here before, and the hearing was closed, and then things came up in discussion.
Could you state your name?
Yeah, my name is Ed Kirk. I'm sorry. I'm an attorney in, in office in OSCE, so I represent the applicant. So I, I'm suggesting that maybe it would be better if we keep the hearing open, just in case something should come up, that we would like to have an opportunity to respond, either that, or if you close that, if in fact something does come up, that we will be able to address those issues. So, just as long as we have an understanding that we will have an opportunity to, to engage in any new information.
If the board has questions in our future discussion is what you're referring to.
Well, in, in one of the last applications, some information and questions came up, yes, and we were concerned that we would have to reopen the hearing to, to address those. So, just as long as we do, we would have that opportunity to address any questions. So discussions to be combined without our participation.
Rich?
You've asked for public comment, you've heard the applicant. We are satisfied that we've heard everything you need to hear. I was getting some nonspecific concern about something that might come up, but I can't imagine what would come up if the people who are proposing this own the property and they have everything worked out between themselves. We were told that the CONCON has signed off on this, the building inspector signs off on this, so I don't see what else is going to come up.
And we have a motion on the table, and it has been seconded. And everybody is satisfied with that? Yes, Jim?
I don't have a problem if the applicant wants to keep it open.
It's, it's a matter of, not semantics, but just as, we don't have a problem if you want to close with a little caveat that if something came up, we'd have an opportunity to-
We have always done that if we have a question.
Question for Brad, can we entertain a motion to reopen for the applicant?
No.
No, I didn't think we could.
No.
It's got to be one or the other, I think.
Yeah, we either close it or we keep it open. And I think we've seen this, this is the second time go around, we've had questions that Mr. McGrath has answered through a redesign, and I think the board feels comfortable at this point, I'm hearing, to close the hearing.
I think there has to be an answer.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. It's been seconded, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yikes. You got to tell me you understand this plan.
Okay, we move on to continuation of public hearing. The applicant is Sun Elite LLC, modification of a definitive plan to weigh the requirement for sidewalk on Sunrise Lane and make drainage improvements on Crawl Road. And I want to remind the board that we are only deciding on whether we're going to require, as was in the original decision, to retain the sidewalk in the plan, or that we agree that it can be removed, and we are looking at the drainage of the road. Those are the only two things that have any bearing on what we're looking at on this plan. So, oh, and I should also mention that the reason it stayed open as a hearing is because we wanted to speak with Mr. Boselli because there were a lot of design engineer questions that the board had.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, thank you. For the record, my name is Michael Boselli from Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant. I designed the drainage mitigation that was submitted to you. Now, there was an original design plan, and then there was a subsequent revised design plan that came as a result of an onsite meeting, second, second meeting with Assistant Town Engineer Scott Schlotter, and, and then a meeting with a concerned neighbor. So, if you'd like, I'll just briefly go through the design, and then I'll have to answer Several years ago, you approved a subdivision that created the lots and the roadway system in here, and the, the portion of the lot in question was approved as a, as a dirt road. It was realigned somewhat, but it was approved as a dirt road. And that's the section from the intersection here, heading east to some existing properties on the far east side of the development. This section was originally all proposed as a, and approved as a dirt, right, gravel dirt surface, non-paved roadway system. And evidently, there've been some concerns about drainage through the subsequent years, and that part of the possible reason for the drainage concerns was a suggestion that part of the road that was approved as dirt was in fact paved. In fact, a section from the intersection to about the halfway point of this section of Crawl Road in question was paved, and there was a suggestion that that may have exacerbated some of the drainage. In my opinion, I'm not, I don't really believe that it exacerbated the drainage in any significant way because whether it would be paved or compacted, sandy dirt material, the compacted sandy dirt material was, in effect, as, as impervious as the pavement. But it could have done some minor exacerbation of the drainage issues. So, subsequent to these concerns being raised, we came up with a solution originally that was an effort to regrade the, the portion that could be regraded, the dirt portion, in a way that instead of the traditional crown in the road that you're used to seeing on your standard cross-section when you have a paved road, it would be cross-pitched in one direction so that the drainage that came down the paved section would then be diverted over to the southern side of Crawl Road into a grass swale, which is the preferred method of drainage containment. There's a cross-section, Section AA on the plan that shows that detail. Subsequent to doing that design, there was input from the Assistant Town Engineer, who typically reviews these matters, and in his opinion, the design was sufficient, and it met the town's standards. There were some further issues and concerns raised by a neighbor, and then the second onsite meeting, and after some brainstorming, there were some other ideas that came out of that meeting that further improved on that original design. The meeting was productive, and there were some suggestions that were reasonably cost-effective that would help further mitigate the concerns. And those concerns included removing a portion of the paved area, and then repaving it with a cross-pitch that would encourage the water that runs down the paved section to not continue onto the gravel area, but would be encouraged and directed with a small asphalt waterway to the swale, so that, in effect, about half of the roadway that may have run off further down Crawl Road onto the dirt area would now be diverted into the grass swale. And in addition to that improvement, it also eliminated a puddling situation that was right at the intersection of a driveway with a residential home. So, that was one of two additional improvements from the original design. The second improvement was to further adjust the grading right at the intersection of Crawl Road with the common private driveways on the far east side of the roadway system, so that, in effect, almost all of the water that could be controlled and contained is directed into a place so that it doesn't go onto adjoining property. And that is the water and runoff that would be within the road surface of Crawl Road. I think the original design, while sufficient, was improved by these suggestions, so that it's even, and a more improved solution. And if this design is incorporated, in my opinion, it'll mitigate against any of the concerns the neighbors had. One of the concerns raised was the issue of potholing on dirt roads, and anyone that has any experience with living on or traveling on a dirt road on a regular basis understands the situation with potholes and the need to, on a somewhat, you know, regular basis, maintain those either by filling or reshaping or grading on, on an interval that's usually a function of how much traffic the roadway sees and the weather conditions that may occur in any given times. In fact, the town of Falmouth has a, sort of a, a maintenance plan where they have equipment that addresses complaints from neighbors that live on these dirt roads, and they have, you know, on a, on a sort of complaint basis program, will go out and maintain these. This, prior to this subdivision being created, and the road being adjusted, the roadway that used to serve these properties experienced the same potholing. In fact, I have a photo of that I'd like to submit. Shows that, you know, potholing is common on a dirt road without some sort of, you know, routine maintenance that occurs, and it occurred before the subdivision, and it could occur if maintenance isn't, you know, incorporated into, into the program for this section of dirt roadway. I would say by incorporating this design, we've probably, we've effectively cured the problem to the maximum extent feasible. We've probably reduced the overall runoff simply by readjusting this pavement and encouraging this paved section to go into the grass swale. We've probably reduced the potential for surface flow by about 50 percent. And I, and I think that this dirt section that's been regraded in a way that encourages runoff to go into the swale probably reduced it. So the overall improvement over the current situation is probably 70 or 80 percent of the improvement over what the condition is now. The original plan, there were no drainage provisions, the plan that this body approved. There's details on the plan. Like I said, it's been reviewed by Scott Schlotter from the Town Engineering Department, and we believe it's a, it's a reasonable, cost-effective solution to address the concerns of the neighbors in the planning board. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Rich?
I think we first should take administrative notice. The potholes exist on any road. All we have to do is-
Wait, Rich.
No, second, I would like to suggest that we be prepared to just wave the sidewalk so we can keep this thing confined to just the drainage issue.
Rich.
That's just, the important issue here is the drainage.
Rich, we cannot decide that right now. We have to wait till we have discussion of the, the full board, and then we decide on those two issues.
I think we should confine the questions to the drainage, which is the only really important matter that's been brought up.
That is because we're talking with Mr. Boselli, who did that. That's why we would, okay?
We talked about potholes, and that's-
No, we're not. All right, does anybody else have any questions of Mr. Boselli?
I do.
Paul?
Mr. Boselli, I understand what you're saying about redirecting the flow, but if you look at the surface of the road from Sunrise Lane to the edge of pavement, it's a slope of about 2.3 percent, which is quite a bit. And then if you look at the cross-section, it doesn't show any information about how that is supposed to redirect at a 90-degree angle into the swell. We've heard testimony before about a more positive way of dealing with it was to put a catch basin on either side, which is a more traditional way of doing that, rather than trying to redirect the flow somewhere else. Beyond that, if you get to the dirt road, there's about a 4 percent slope, so anything that skips over there is going to continually run down. And I, I just, I'm, I'm troubled by the fact we're trying to redirect the flow in some fashion that really doesn't appear. I don't see the slope going over, and I understand the idea of putting things into swell area and what your percentages are, but I think a far more positive arrangement would have a catch basin either side with a traditional crown on the road and deal with the water on the property rather than direct it off somewhere else. So I'd like to hear your comments on that.
Well, it's very common and traditional, if you look in many of the subdivisions in Falmouth, to not have a catch basin, but instead to have a paved waterway that leads to a grass swale. And the plan shows that flared paved waterway, and while it doesn't show on cross-section, it does show very specific proposed spot elevations on the road, and, and the spot elevations are very specific, and, and have been designed in a way that there is in fact a low point that directs the water to this side, and then there's a crushed, a broken stone erosion pad at the bottom of that, which is very common and typical as a, as an alternate solution to a more costly installation of the catch basins. And given the fact that we're only talking about about 100, 140 feet of roadway that had virtually no drainage controls, or still doesn't have any drainage controls, and there is no evidence of significant scouring or, of erosion on any of the times that I've been on the site, I think it's, this is a reasonable, appropriate- on the site, I think it's, this is a reasonable, appropriate solution, in my opinion, and evidently in the town engineer's opinion.
Well, Sean, you said that the swale is the typical solution that is done with most of the subdivisions in this town. What, if anything, is different about this in terms of layout, topography, or any other condition that you're aware of that would create the problems that we've been hearing about?
I don't think there's anything different or atypical. In fact, I'm rarely not seeing the problems that have been discussed based on my observations. The road is 2 percent, 3 percent, 4 percent is relatively, a relatively flat slope road. You allow up to 10 percent pitch on roadways. This roadway follows the natural grade. There's really no cuts or fills. I've never experienced any issues with this type of system. In fact, the town itself on Mill Road incorporated the same exact system right along the edge of Mill Road, right where they're doing the underground cable installation now, and it works great.
Brian, a similar situation to this, if my memory is correct, and it may not be. Wasn't Edgerton Drive done something on this order?
Yeah. Are there any number of designs that the professional engineers can suggest to you? And this is being suggested by the applicant's design engineer. Ask questions in regards to design. You're on the right track there. I wouldn't try going looking for comparative analysis. Let's focus here with this solution, this segmented. Is this a design solution that the board, you know, can lean towards or think about during this discussion? And do you have enough information about it to have an informed discussion next week?
The reason I ask that is because I sometimes have problems envisioning, and I thought, well, if other board members do, then that would be a place to go.
You'll see them on any number of functional classification of roadways. They're on interstate highways. You know, which one you hit, you're on a little bit. It's a design solution that we all can see from the design, too.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Jim?
I'm comfortable with the explanation of the hard surfaces. I just want to ask a question. If I'm hearing you correctly, and I'm not sure I am, but I want to make sure, that even that the unpaved section is going to be pitched to the side? And I'm wondering how with snow plows and use, and then a grader coming in and regrading when the pothole's there, how is that going to be maintained?
Brian, you want to...
Can I just offer a suggestion to the board? Let's try to segment this in bite-sized portions. If I could just ask the board to focus on the design. Is the design something that, you know, you understand? And then during your decision process, you can get into some of the maintenance issues and the what ifs, but right now you're looking at a very, you're looking at a design solution. And part of your discussions and decisions would be how you want to maintain that design solution. Right now, we're just getting hypotheticals, what happens if that, that's my suggestion. Otherwise, we'd be here all night with that.
We have a professional engineer, and I was just asking a question, but if I can wait till another time to do it, I'll be glad.
Sure. You did ask a question, though. You understood that that's to be regraded, and the answer is yes. Did you have something to add?
Not really. I think I fully understand. I didn't really get the concept last time when, before you were explaining it, but I think I understand now that the north side of the road will maintain its current grade, and the south side will be cut lower to achieve this pitch. Is that correct?
Yes. And if you look closely on the plan, you'll see little drainage arrow flow symbols.
Right.
And you'll see some numbers that represent proposed spot elevations, and you'll see that the ones on this side of the road are always slightly lower than the ones on this side. And the existing conditions on the site, thankfully, lend themselves to being able to do exactly what you just said, which is to hold the grade, in effect, on this side and slightly lower it on this side, so that the water is, any water that actually hits on the gravel will be encouraged to pitch into the swale. Any water that is on the paved section, which is crowned, no catch basins, but would run down, and then it would be, then the pavement would be re-pitched, if you will, to a point where it can get into the paved swale and then into the grass swale.
Right. So as long as you have room to cut rather than fill, I agree that I think it will work.
Yes, Bob?
The problem has been, there's been a lot of water that runs down this section of the road. And I would think, to my way of thinking, that you'd want to eliminate as much of the water on the way down to that point as possible. If you have a roof and you've got 30 feet of gutter, and you want to, you don't want to have all that water running to one downs boat, you'd break it up so it's being split up a little bit. Can this be guaranteed that that's going to handle that? I just think that a catch basin at the end, or even halfway down, or something would kind of mitigate the amount of flow that goes down this road, because it seems like we're putting all our eggs in this one basket here. Is that a legitimate concern?
I think that's a concern, but I'm gonna, if I could, I'm gonna use your analogy of the gutters and downs boats. I think you need to consider, or think of this spot here with the asphalt waterway is like an intermediate gutter or downs boat. It's diverting the water that's on this upper section to a place that it doesn't travel onto the dirt road. So instead of having no gutter or downs boat till you get down here, you have one halfway along the roof line.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, Ralph? Yes?
Yeah, Mr. Borcelli. Could you explain the surface that is at the very end of the road there, please, that is supposed to drain into the catch basin? What is that surface?
This surface is all currently like a silty gravel compacted surface.
Right. And what is that portion at the end? At the very end there where you said no?
This right here?
That right there.
Well, we've put a note on the plan that says the area that's cross shall be regraded to create a very low-profile berm, so that there will be a high point here, a very subtle high point. So that this is almost like, I hate to even use the word, a low-profile speed hump, if you will, but not really, not quite that. So that the water that runs down here that may want to continue this way will be encouraged to go this way, so that it, in effect, is acting like a very, very subtle, and it only has to be an inch or so, like buring, if you will, that will dam off the water and intercept it. You know, it's like the last line of defense for any, a drop of water is going to want to still go downhill, but it's going to be pitched this way, and it's going to get into the swale. But, you know, maybe this very last section needs a little bit more encouragement to get over there.
What is the surface of that speed bump?
Dirt, compacted earth material, compacted.
The same as the rest of the road?
Same as the rest of this section here.
So that could be graded away quite easily. My other question is, and I brought it up last time, if you plow that road and you have snow on the side of the swale, then it seems to me as though, once that snow freezes and if it thaws and then freezes and becomes icy and impervious, then the water's not going to run, not going to reach the swale. It's going to continue to go down the road, and you can't throw the snow from the road on the other side of the swale. And so that you would have to say, if you're going to grade that road, you're going to have to put all of the snow on the uphill side of the grade. So who's going to say to the people who plow that road, that's what has to be done? And I just, I can't, I can't envision that swale being effective in the winter.
I'll try to answer that.
You can try to answer that, however, it is a maintenance issue that is difficult to deal with here when we're looking at construction.
Well, the first thing is, we all know it does snow on Cape Cod. So on those rare occasions...
On those rare occasions.
Like any drainage system, in this town, I've driven through snowstorms, even if you don't uncover a catch basin from snow, it's not going to work. So there's a certain, when you design something, whatever it is, there's a certain assumption that there will be some maintenance of the system, whether it's snow removal, that has maybe some site-specific, unique things that you have to deal with, that will occur. If need be, plow. A plow could create the snow on this side just by turning the angle of the plow in that section. If you were catch basins, as, let's just say, let's use catch basins instead. If the catch basins are not, if the road isn't plowed properly, you could have an issue with a catch basin that may not be uncovered from snow. So I will not say that this is, you know, a maintenance-free system. I will say that it's typical and common in that these types of roadways exist all over Falmouth, and there may be occasions where some, a little bit more attention to maintenance needs to occur on those rare occasions where we get significant snowfall.
Okay. But an alternative to what you proposed here is to pave it all the way down to the end and put catch basins in there and crown the road. That is an alternative.
Mm-hmm.
So that's part of our decision, Ralph, as to whether we consider this design...
That's correct.
...to be acceptable to us.
That's correct.
And that'll come out in our discussion. Paul?
If you follow the argument that there's a low-level speed bump on the dirt road, why wouldn't there be a low-level speed bump at the end of the paved area for the same reason? I'm still troubled by the fact that you're directing flow coming down at a fairly heavy rate, and all of a sudden it doesn't know it has to make a right-hand turn, it's going to skip over that area that you paved here and continue to the gravel area. I don't know how you're going to move that thing over without some kind of a diversionary, I don't want to say structure, it's not that big, but some way of moving the flow in that direction, encouraging it to go. Just by tilting the road isn't going to do it, but it's too fast, the slope coming over.
Sure, I thought I had a question from Ralph's part.
Well, we're talking about a section of roadway that's about 130 feet long and has about a 2 percent pitch. The velocity of any runoff on that one section is really minor at best, so there's no real significant energy or velocity that's going to make that small section of roadway runoff develop such that it would jump. If you're encouraging the water with regrading, I am still of the opinion that it's a viable solution, an alternative to catch basins. I mean, it's, catch basins are another alternative, but I believe that this is, you know, a reasonable alternative.
Rich?
Thank you. Mr. Borcelli, as an engineer, do you ever guarantee any, even a paved road with catch basins, that it's never going to be a problem when it snows? Do you ever guarantee that?
Engineers don't use the word guarantee, ever.
Can you conceive of an engineer ever thinking of guaranteeing any such thing?
No.
Can you see any reason why, given what you understand about this, anybody should be concerned that you guarantee this system against that possibility of snow and ice forming and interfering with your drainage design?
I'll answer it a different way. I wouldn't guarantee this system unless there's steps taken if there's a snowstorm that it needs, needs some attention.
In other words, do you see any reason why this is any more vulnerable to a snow and ice problem during the winter than any other swale system or paved drainage system that you've designed?
No. This isn't a unique system. It's no more vulnerable than any other type of drainage system in Falmouth.
Okay. If no one on the board has further questions?
Yeah, I have one final question. It appears what you're, from your comments earlier, that this is a cost-effective solution from your perspective. And that implies that the catch basins are more expensive than tilting the roadway and doing all this grading. I assume that's what you meant by that.
Yes.
But bear in mind, part of this hearing is to eliminate some walkways along Sunrise Lane. Well, if that's a criteria on that you're using, maybe the cost of the sidewalk could be put toward the catch basins and solve that problem, if that's what your major concern is. It appears what you're trying to do is minimize cost, and I understand that, and that's, you represent your client well by doing that. But there is a trade-off here, and if that's the criteria, maybe some of the costs of the sidewalk could be directed toward the drainage issues.
Anything further? Okay. What I'd like to do is now go to members of the public, and I ask that you direct your questions specifically on the topics that Mr. Borcelli has talked about tonight and not repeat what we've heard in past hearings, because time is an issue tonight. So as before, if you would go up to the podium and state your name and pose your question to Mr. Borcelli about what he has presented tonight, if you have questions of him. Is there anyone from the public who wishes? Yes?
I'll take this opportunity. Scott Brown, I'm 65, Crowell Road. So this is my first chance to actually see the proposed plan in detail, and a couple of my comments, specifically to Mr. Borcelli, are going to mimic some of the ones from the board, but maybe in a little bit more detail. Down here at what I call the split, where all the driveways split off to the nine individual properties that are down here, the proposed thing is to put in the speed bump or some sort of diversionary berm here to sort of sear stuff over to this catch basin. There is a catch basin over there right now, and in the correspondences that I submitted and that Scott Thrasher submitted, we show pictures during rainstorms how this catch basin that already exists in the past overfills. It's a catch basin you can stand in, and it's this deep to me, that's how much water comes down here. You can also see in those pictures, water not just, you know, gliding down this, but you can see it, you know, rapiding down the side of this. So there's a lot of water that comes down here. So this is regraded once already to try and divert water over here, and as some of the board members have pointed out, it does not take much for that to go away. It can get just run down by the cars driving over it, it can get run down by weather action, by plowing action, et cetera. So there is an aspect, and I know this is not what we're trying to get to right now, about the maintenance of this, because we want to understand, as residents, who's going to be in charge of this? I understand potholes. We grade my section of road that goes down, five or six more houses already to deal with potholes. That's not my biggest concern. My biggest concern is the additional erosion that happens down this major section of road because of how much water comes down here. And if it doesn't stop here, and I'd like to understand a little bit more about the edge of this pavement, because I have the same question, we have pictures already that show before the pavement, when the pavement used to stop up here, before it was extended a little bit further by some of our neighbors, how much flooding used to happen in this area. And you can see in some of those pictures that Scott Thrasher took a couple years ago, how much water is coming down into this section. So there is a significant amount of water that comes down here. And without some sort of a lip or something on the edge of that pavement, I am a little bit surprised that we think that all the water is going to divert off into this. Even with this whole catch basin sort of system here, hopefully taking water off of this, I would like to understand again, as a resident, who is going to be in charge of maintaining this? This is not my land. As far as I understand, this is the land because this is where the denitrification system is. This is sort of common land to development. Is the development going to be in charge of making sure that this structure stays clear and is maintained over time, or is it me as a resident downstream from this to go onto what I think of as private property to sort of maintain this structure? So I would like to make sure that whatever you guys decide, that you make it very clear to us as residents what we are responsible for. And keep in mind, I didn't change this road. So telling me that I now have to maintain a much larger structure seems somewhat unfair to me, that myself and other residents down here are going to have to make sure that we maintain other things. So this was a small, meandering road up here. We're perfectly fine taking care of that. The town allowed somebody to come in here, get rid of all of the forest in this area to straighten out this road and to install a road that's straight, hard-packed, two-lane squad. So my specific question to the engineer, who I consider far more knowledgeable than me, is what should we expect down here as far as the maintenance of this thing that diverts up into... diverts up into the catch basin? And also, a little bit more detail about how this is going to end here to make sure that that water doesn't continue on to here, and how much maintenance is going to be associated with this thing? And then, hopefully, some guidance from the town on exactly who's supposed to maintain these things long-term.
Okay.
First question I have, to respond to your question, do you have a neighborhood association?
For those of us down here, no.
Rich, Rich, stop. No, stop. Now. That's not appropriate, right now. His questions revolve around the structuring of the road.
But I want to know, if there is a neighborhood
It does not matter, right now.
Because he has a concern, that he's expressing that
Rich. Enough.
Are we going to have to make a decision?
We will make a decision.
And we're not going to be concerned about, his concern about who's going to maintain it?
Rich, you're out of order. Stop it.
Let me help out. Drop the maintenance issue, folks. That's going to come at your decision time. I think the board has been overly generous with its time about getting information. I think the board understands that maintenance is an issue. We'll be here all night long if talking maintenance. But that comes at decision time. So, if you have specific design questions about, is there a rain bill at the end of the pavement? What's the design solution for the earthen? That's what we need to focus on as a board tonight and a public. Some of the decisions that follow out of your discussions about how this is going to work in the future is really not on the table tonight. And I know the boards are concerned about it. We're going to get them. But let's get the information you need to make an informed decision, get this hearing process closed. You're going on three hours, total of three hearings, on a very small design solution. But some of the maintenance and future questions are what's really concerned.
And right now, we are concerned about the design of the road, which is why Mr. Borselli has come.
I just wanted to make that one last comment, that, again, in the letters that both I submitted, Scott Thrasher submitted, and Steve Kramer submitted, we do have a lot of pictures about what the rainwater looks like in these sections of the road, both before pavement extensions, after pavement extensions, et cetera, so that you guys can have a feel for how much water comes down here. It is not as vulnerable.
And those are in our files, which I would encourage the board to look at before making a decision. All right. Yes, Mrs. Hayward, is, do you have a question about the structure of the road?
I have two questions from
But about the structure of the road?
Yes. Madam Chairman, my first question relates to the comment that Mr. Curry made about, it's when you're making the decision that you're going to have some discussions about this road, but is this the time you're collecting information? All right. My question to Mr. Borselli, I think, would be, if this were a paved road, is it more apt to be a road that would continue to exist with such things as plowing in times of snow?
I don't quite understand your question.
Third, we're talking about two, we're talking about what sounds to me, I'm not related to this issue. I personally have an issue on a private road, which was designed by the planning board in 1966. I wasn't here then. A very curious thing has happened to it. So, how can I, do you want me to say that it would seem to me that this extension on this road would be more adequate if it were paved? Or do you want me to try to ask an oblique question? Does Mr. Borselli think that this would be a more lasting extension to this road if it were paved?
And have fewer drainage problems if it were entirely
And have fewer drainage problems.
Okay.
That's what I was asking.
Hi. I'm Bob Amant, as you know, attorney for the developer. There doesn't seem to be any question that if the entire road going down to the end of the, end of that portion of the road were paved and there were drainage facilities at the end of it, perhaps as well as along it, then there wouldn't be, likely be, a water problem at the end of it. You know, of course, that the road was laid out, as Mr. Borselli said, as a straight, wide gravel road in 2004, almost 10 years ago, the October decision was made. And the planning board approved that with no drainage, and that's what they approved. I don't think we'd be having this discussion because the road was constructed substantially that way, except for the fact that there was the pavement put down for half of the distance. And so, questions arose about whether that increased the amount of water, and Mr. Borselli didn't, doesn't think so, and Mr. Kramer has written, he doesn't think so. The real problem is with the original design. And the problem for the planning board and the problem for the developer is that to come in 10 years later and say, you know what, we approved back then, and what you built, and what we reviewed, and released the bond on the basis of, that is, released all except $40,000. The town inspected the road and released all except $40,000 to cover the final pavement. So, I'll be quick about this, but just to now say, well, pave, just do it all over again, pave the whole road, put in drainage, that's what we have a problem with. What we think is happening here is that we're taking care of half the water that goes down there, and, you know, half, getting rid of half the water probably solves more than half the problem, because if you have, you know, 12 inches of water and you get rid of, you know, that, it doesn't mean 12 inches came down the road, maybe 15 or 18 inches came down, but there's still a puddle. If we get rid of half the water, that's a real substantial benefit to it. So, the answer to the question is, sure, paving the whole road would be an improvement. That's not what the board approved. Now, let me also say that the solution that's being proposed is costly. It's more costly than what was initially submitted a couple of months ago, which the town engineer said met town standards. It's based on the drainage calculations Mr. Borselli prepared and the town engineer reviewed. And we've taken into account these further improvements to make it even better, and certainly took into account the fact that we hope to get some savings from not installing the sidewalk on Sunrise Lane. I assure you, that's already sort of taken into account.
Madam Chairman, that did not answer her question.
Yes, it did, actually. He answered her question. He said
The specific question would not, whether it would be better, the specific question, I believe, was, assuming we change the grade the way Mr. Borselli has said, wouldn't it be more impervious to damage? The same grade, the same
No.
If it were paved? That was her question.
No. Stop. Brian?
That was the question.
Again, my advice to the board is try to stay away from hypotheticals, ask questions about the design in front of you. A lot of this stuff is going to come up during your discussion and then your decision. But you're, try to ask more concrete questions from the public about what this design is or what is, it is not, and not other hypothetical designs, we need to be going through this ad nauseam. I might sense that the board's getting old.
Yeah, I think we've really hit this well.
There was a question asked by one of the neighbors. Is it Mr. Cole from Crowe? It wasn't answered. He made reference to standing in this catch basin.
Right.
I think, I think what, if you've been out there, you do, there was sort of a half-hearted, and I guess is a better appropriate way to say it, attempt to sort of trench out a section of the area over here and hopefully solve some of the water that was running down the street. The catch basin that we're proposing is nothing like that. What we're proposing is an actual pre-cast concrete catch basin that would be at the very end of the grass swale, that would be installed in a material that's very perccable, permeable coarse sand and gravel below the ground, much like a cesspool or a leaching pit for a septic system, with a, with a standard catch basin framing grade on top that is in the grass line swale, that is above the grass line swale by three or four inches, so that some ponding can occur in the grass, there's treatment through a grass swale, sediments and some of the pollutants that come off the surface pavement get trapped in that. And then, the water goes into the catch basin that is in very, very coarse sands and gravel, and not just the hole that's dug in the ground that then gets silted in and sealed off with the sediment and no longer function. So, it's a completely different type of catch basin.
Yeah, I would encourage you to go into the planning office and look at the design. Is there anyone else in the public who has? Okay.
My name is Steve Kramer. I'm a property owner at 60 Crowe Road. I was here back in January, I'm talking with the board, and I know time is tight, I'm not going to repeat anything really that I've said before, and you have my recent correspondence that I think lays out all of my opinions. But I do want to respond to a couple of things that have been said tonight in particular, because it sounds like the board is close to the decision. First of all, I believe it's been insinuated that the neighbors have made a big deal about potholes. That isn't the case. And I know you don't want to talk about potholes, but that is not our concern. We're not concerned about maintaining the normal driveway that every user of a private drive has to maintain. We're not arguing that point at all. But I think there's an important point here that's been talked about several times in the two meetings I've been at and some other correspondence that I've read, the issue about the town's approval of the design, Mr. Schuler reviewing this design. I'm not here to debate whether the pitch and the size of the catch basin meets town standards for a normal road. As I've said in my correspondence, I don't think that that's the main issue here, because in a normal town road, even if, even in the wintertime, if it freezes over and it floods, it's a temporary inconvenience. It's not directing significant water off somebody's property onto someone else's property when that occurs. So, to me, the fact that this road may meet pitch and catch basin size is, in my opinion, as an engineer and as a property owner, it's not really that relevant to this particular situation, because this is a very unusual situation. The town doesn't normally build roads or approve roads that result in erosion and damage and flooding off of the site directly as a result of that building of the road, even if the road itself was built to town standards. I think that's the subtle difference that is important following Mr. Borselli's comment. Also, Mr. Borselli indicated he didn't think this road was any more vulnerable than other roads throughout Falmouth and the Cape. I would agree with that, in the sense of gravel roads, they erode, they pothole, they shed water all the time, it's a common design to shed water over into drainage swales, no argument there. But this one, this particular situation demands long-term meticulous, greater-than-normal maintenance, not because we're worried about potholes or having to do normal repairs to maintain it passable, but if that isn't done meticulously every time it snows and every time it rains hard, this flooding off-site will happen. I've seen it out there flowing so fast that it's, it's very difficult to control this water and prevent it, assuming it's meticulously maintained. So, this, the fact that the town approved this road maybe with all good intentions 10 years ago, the fact that this road has been built, regardless of who's responsible for it, it is flooding and eroding the neighbors. My property, particularly Mr. Thrasher's property.
But do you have a question of Mr. Borselli and his design?
Not a question. I understand his design. So, but I think, but he made some statements that I think, as a professional engineer, I'm here to, if you're gathering information, I'm asking for any questions you might have of me, but I'm just offering my opinion as an engineer about this.
Even if it is regraded, then, is my question, as Mr. Borselli has portrayed, that it will be regraded, re-pitched?
If it's meticulously maintained on an annual and maybe even more, every time it snows, it'll capture, it'll redirect, redirect most of the water. I know 50 to 75% of the water probably will be redirected, if it's perfectly maintained on a regular, round, round-the-year basis.
So, the question that you really have to the board is to look at maintenance issues. You agree with Mr. Borselli's design, then, it appears?
I don't agree that it's the right design, but I agree it'll do what I just indicated.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, do I have a question of him as an engineer?
Yes.
It's a question I asked Mr. Borselli, and I would like you to address this question, because I think it's an important question. What is it about the topography, the grades, or any other feature on the land that makes this design apparently create more problems with drainage than other similarly situated properties? Do you have a, an idea of what that is? And if you do, would you please explain it?
It's the fact that at the end of a drainage collection area, not just the road itself, but there's areas adjacent to the road that are higher in topography, that grade toward the road. So, there's a collection area, and this road funnels it and then just stops and directs the water off property. That's the difference here. Roads like this are built all over Falmouth, all over the Cape, other places. The difference here is all the water that's collected gets funneled onto someone else's property by design, I mean, by design it does, and then causes damage off-site. That's the difference here. It's not that the road itself is unusual. It's the way it's terminated, pitched, and then terminated on someone else's, my property. This road ends on my property.
You heard Mr. Brown, I think that Mr. Brown said before this, when the road kind of meandered, there was never any problem, and it was not built to town standards, it was just an old country road. And so, it appears, and correct me if I'm wrong, what happened was, when the board required that certain standards be met and applied those standards to this road, there was something missing in the calculations which led to this. Am I correct?
I don't know what calculations were done at that time, so I don't know what calculations were missed, but if you look at photographs that I have submitted, Mr. Thrasher submitted, if you look at the before and the after, a layperson or a professional engineer can see the dramatic difference in what's been done to the property. You could just look at it and see that you had a fully wooded condition with a meandering driveway, a narrow meandering driveway. Now, you have a deforested area where a lot of the water comes to this road, and then it comes down like a highway onto my property. It's really rather simple.
So, again, the board should be encouraged to go look at the file and see what's in the file
Thank you.
Before we make our decision. Thank you. Okay. If there are no more questions directed toward Mr. Borselli from the public, it's time to close this hearing.
I won't be closing the hearing.
I'll second.
And take it under advisement.
And take it under advisement.
So, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Next on our agenda, we have a discussion. The applicant is Centacor LLC, site plan review to construct a 6,992-square-foot retail tire store on .89 acres with associated parking, drainage, and landscaping.
I'll have to reduce myself.
Come get us when it's over.
Thanks, Madam Chairman, and members of the board. For your record, I'm Bob Amant, attorney for the applicant, Centacor. John Wipachewski is here. He's the project manager for Town Fair Tire, and Brandon Lee, a professional engineer who's designed these plans. So, we presented the plans at the meeting several weeks ago. I think the board was fairly satisfied with what we presented, but there have been some changes made, which I think are good improvements to the plan. This is actually the plan you saw previously, and you'll recall that there was some improvements made to the Burger King property, one-way traffic flow here, two-way traffic flow here. The changes that have been made to the plan include a one-way traffic flow here and one way out. way out. The realignment of parking on the Burger King property, which was actually quite a bit different and inefficient, it's at an angle actually to the other parking. And by lining it up and redoing the whole parking arrangement on the Burger King property, we're actually able to significantly increase the buffer between the properties and the amount of open space, actually an increase of 1,800 square feet, pretty significant. Also, so you can see how much narrower that is, and you can see that these islands have been expanded to create a safer situation in the Burger King property and to have additional opportunity for some greenery. So those are the changes that were made to the site. The result is to make the lot coverage on the Burger King property more conforming. It's grandfathered, but now we're getting closer to 70% lot coverage. And the plan still keeps the beech trees in front of the Burger, in front of Town Fair Tire. Also, again, one of the benefits of the plan is to not have a separate curb cut onto T-Ticket Highway. The elevations have been changed significantly. That is the appearance of the proposed building. This is the current proposal. This is facing T-Ticket Highway. This is facing Burger King. This is facing Falmouth Mall. The bay doors for service face the Admiral T Motel. Gone is all the brick. There's no longer an awning proposed. The color scheme is gray with white trim, with dark gray roof shingles. The siding will be wood or harp plank clapboard and shingles. And windows have been added, both facing T-Ticket Highway and placing Burger, facing Burger King, that is the facades that are visible from Route 28 here and here and over here. So we have windows with six over six with shutters on the side. So a significant effort has been made to make this building design more in keeping with other projects that are going on along T-Ticket Highway that are using traditional appearances. The only other thing I wanted to comment on is that it has been suggested that noise could be a problem, particularly to the Schoolhouse Green Apartments, which are across T-Ticket Highway. We don't think that will be a problem. The closest apartment to the, to the bay doors is approximately 305 feet away across busy Route 28. The hours of operation of this business are basically hours when Route 28 is busy. Again, the doors face away from Route 28. And furthermore, the service bays are going to be air-conditioned so that the policy will be to keep the doors closed except when cars enter or exit the facility. So open bay doors is, even if they were not 300 and some feet away from the closest residents, are not going to be a problem. We don't think noise will be a problem with the facility. That's our update. The Board of Appeals has its hearing on April 17th, I believe, a continued hearing. And we're going to go back to the Design Review Committee for the third time with these revised elevations. And they seem to think that this tire store is not in appropriate use in the Business Two District next to Falmouth Mall and so on. We're trying to satisfy their concerns with these changes in the design and hope that the board appreciates all the benefits of this particular design, sharing the Burger King curb cut, and in the process, improving the Burger King property. Thanks.
Okay. Questions, comments, done.
So regarding the noise, I know you, at the last meeting, addressed my concerns about the noise impacting the adjacent hotel, motel, whatever it is. And it occurred to me, and I wish I had thought of it on the first meeting, would it be a possibility to have that building turned so that the bay doors face toward the mall? And there'd be even less noise impact? Has that been considered?
It certainly was considered extensively. We had a number of different designs because of the use of the building for the bays and then the public spaces and the desire to keep the building as far away from the beech trees as possible. That didn't work. The design, this is the design. Now, I want to find out again, and I think it's responsive to the concern about the hotel, is that the work on the cars is done with the doors closed. The motel isn't right next to the property. What's next to the property is their parking area where people make noise. Now, I understand that people are concerned about the idea of pneumatic drills being particularly noisy, but this is going to be done behind closed doors. I also think it's worth pointing out that when commercial accommodations are approved in a, in a business district, you know, one of the concerns is that it not have an adverse impact on the business district. And it doesn't seem fair to not allow a use that's allowed in the Business Two District like this because of a motel. And the motel is not residential. I don't believe there's any complaint about this proposed use that's been filed by the, by the hotel. They probably, I'm sure their rooms are air-conditioned and windows are closed in the, in the summer. People are there generally at hours that are not the operating hours of the business. I hope that's responsive.
Okay.
Rich?
Chairman, are you aware of any downtown areas where new housing has been built with closer to operating garages?
Well, yes, of course. You know, the housing that is located between, it's still Firestone and the Peking Palace Restaurant, you know, right next door to.
How close are the distances between those new houses next to that existing garage? When compared to.
Well, I don't know, but I'm sure within 50 feet. I shouldn't say I'm sure, but that sort of thing.
Paul?
Thomas, you mentioned the distance from the bays to the apartments across T-Ticket Highway over 300, 305 feet.
Yes.
But you didn't mention how far it is from those bays to the, to the hotel.
Well.
It's a lot less than that, I would imagine.
Yes, the distance is probably about 80 feet. Those are motel units.
Right.
They are not residences. They are not places where people are throughout the day, especially they are not elderly housing. There's a very significant difference. And again, I'd point out that where commercial accommodations are allowed, I don't think they should be allowed to prevent allowed businesses. So, you know, to, to have the tire-changing operations be behind closed doors should really be a significant, I don't think anybody in that motel is likely to have windows open. Those are air-conditioned rooms you, there are no balconies over there. We don't think it will be a problem. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Members of the public, please come up to the podium. Remember, this is a site plan review, so we're keeping our attention focused on the site plan.
Stammens Lotov, Jericho Pat. I live on Falmouth Heights, and I go to this place at least three times a day. And if you look, what is coming to there is on a corner. The way that this thing is designed, it's not showing you the retaining walls to the site, that it, not only that you don't have an access from the, from the mall site where it belongs, it plugs everything, you cannot even walk. So the whole traffic, pedestrian and cars and delivery, and you're going to have delivery, you're going to have trucks on this thing, and you've got 18 feet to go through. If this property is too small for what they want to do, they need to do, and they have to do a business that is, that they can do what they want. But if you go and look on the back, the way that this property opens this way, you have an expense at the back to the mall. We don't own a garage on the street. It's a tire garage. You can call it a store, but nobody goes to buy just the tire itself. And what is happening through this highway out there, you have double lane further up, and everything comes right to this corner, and it bushes. There is, I don't know if there is any more congested place in town. When I have to get out from, to go to the east, I go to Spring Bar's Road, Maravista, and then go to, to avoid this, this area. The worst thing is when I go to the post office, I have to use the post office, try to get into that traffic. You put one more car there, and there will be a lot more that will be coming through that thing. The way that this thing is designed is not showing you if it gets to the other thing. Everything is channeled from the top. If they accept the fact that a business belong into the, that's why we have a mall. They're trying to lift up this thing. If you look from, from the other side, I don't, I cannot recall any building in this town where it's like a medieval castle with the walls up and this thing on the top of I ask you to have a serious consideration on this thing because we will have to live with your decision for the next 200 years. I'm not going to be here, but for the rest of my life, I will live with this thing.
So we have, we have a five-foot retaining wall that you're referring to.
Thank you.
We have a retaining wall along the back that you're referring to.
Yes. If you, if you look on the thing from the side where he's talking about the.
Okay, so you're commenting that you don't like that in the site plan?
Can you tell me another situation in this town? Never mind to be Cape Cod thing or in this town where you have this type of walls around it. It is an unusual thing. If it's put on the other side, you have the road where you can deliver, you can undertake things. Trying to put it on this corner there, you're in the narrow thing. I don't have to design this thing for them, but this will be a disaster.
You're objecting to the traffic as well, the additional traffic?
Absolutely, yes. Yes, ma'am. I wish that you consider this thing, but the traffic is the worst thing, and the town is going to grow into that direction more than any one that we have around. Thank you very much. I appreciate.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this?
Malcolm Donald, member of the Falmouth Historical Commission. I notice from the drawings, the bricks are gone. I also noticed that Captain Lawrence's house is gone. I'm wondering, are you in receipt of the Historical Commission's finding on these changes?
Are we? I haven't seen them.
Pat, I need to make sure the public understands that you're conducting a plan review.
Right.
Design.
Design review.
And if there's something in the file from the Historic Commission that speaks to the site plan and design, it's germane from the board.
Well, that's what I wondered, if there was something germane to the site plan review.
I don't recall seeing, but if Mr. Donald can just refer to that, what you're talking about, if it's the disappearance of the home, that's not from the board.
Right.
No, I'm trying to find out whether you're in receipt of the Historical Commission's finding on this application.
I don't know, I don't know what you mean by finding. If there's a, is there a correspondence of something?
There's, you haven't got anything from the Historical Commission on this?
Pat.
We'll have to look.
I'll look, but if it's got to do with the demolition delay of the house, is that really what you're trying to say?
Uh, no, no.
But in that, for the sake of time, if you want to express the vote of the committee to the board, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I can't, I can't, I'm not speaking for the Falmouth Historical Commission.
Oh, I'm.
I just would like to know whether you are in receipt of the.
Vote of the board of the commission.
Say again?
Vote of the commission regards this project?
A finding from the commission.
I'm not, I'm not aware of any of that.
Okay.
But speaking for the commission, you can report to us what the finding was.
Sure.
That's not speaking for the commission, that's just telling us what the commission saw.
Oh, well, I'm, yeah, I'm not, I'm not here to, I don't want to speak for the commission.
Okay, so do you have something on the site plan?
Okay. I guess my follow-up question would be, how can you consider this plan without first looking at the commission's finding?
It's very easy because the zoning allows this by right. It's a business district. So it does allow this business development here. We are looking at site plan review to know whether the landscaping is appropriate, the traffic pattern is appropriate, safety is appropriate, lighting, help me if I hit everything that we're supposed to be looking at with site plan review. So those are the things that we look at under site plan review. That is our charge.
Right.
As a board.
Right, right. So you're not, you're not, you're not going to consider the findings of the commission?
We can't under site plan review.
Okay.
Is there anyone else? Yes, Rich.
We especially can't consider them if we don't know what they are.
True.
Tell us.
This drama.
Mr. Donald's remarks were confusing. I don't know whether, since he's become a member of the commission, there's been a discussion about this or not, but I will tell you, and I probably have it here, but I will get it for you and submit it to you. The Historical Commission has already issued its approval for the demolition of the building under the demolition delay bylaw. That was done approximately a year and a half to two years ago by the Zalinski family. So unless, I don't know if Mr. Donald is aware of that, or he's suggesting there is something new, we're not aware of it.
The question was posed by Mr. Donald, it's fine, there's no, there's nothing in the file, there's nothing on the record. Before issuance of a building permit can occur, Mr. Goran needs to have the certificate of the commission in hand. of the commission in hand. But that's not a question from this board at this point.
Anyway, we have the certificate already.
That's fine, then. That answers his question.
That's a question from Mr. Donald. It might be related, I don't know. We heard about retaining walls. Are there retaining walls there now?
Well, I think that the speaker was referring to a wall along here, and I think there will be a wall along here. They're not facing, they're not facing the street. I don't believe they'll be visible from a public way.
Are they existing, or are they being built?
I don't think that a retaining wall exists here at this time. I could be wrong about that, but I don't think so.
Those are proposed retaining walls.
Yeah, no, the retaining walls don't exist at this time.
And what would be the purpose of them?
To have a level site and retain the driveways is, that fair? Yeah. You know, the suggestion that the building should face the mall is, you know, we don't have the bay windows facing the street.
We couldn't do that.
No matter what the, it's a commercial retail building, and the suggestion, I think, was made that there will be more going on than just tire sales. And we've already provided information. There's no repairs going to go on, no automotive repairs, just selling and putting on tires and balancing and alignment. That's it.
Yep, that's what was testified to us. So, I think there's no further comment, and I think we can, yes.
Mr. Ahmet says that there's a demolition permit. That demolition permit is expired, according to the building commissioner.
That's not what we have to be involved in, though. Really, it isn't.
Okay. And doesn't the site plan require, you know, moving things? I don't know, I guess, I'm at a loss as to a site plan. You're considering trees, but why aren't you considering existing buildings there? I don't understand.
We can't. That's not, uh-uh. We only can consider what is being proposed.
I won't get into it, but the question of the use of the building has answers. And there are discussions going on with a group of people, a number of whom were involved with the restoration of Highfield Hall. They include Ann Sears, Eric Turkington, Mrs. Shep, Frank Shepherd's wife. I apologize for not remembering.
Susan.
Susan Shepherd, of course. I mean, Pete, and the Town Fair Tire has agreed to postpone the time when it would otherwise demolish the building and to give this group the opportunity to move the building. They have inspected the building twice. So, efforts are being made to see if this building can be preserved. It's worth pointing out that the old portion of the building measures only about seven hundred square feet. So, that's good. It means it could be moved. But the use of it for commercial purposes on site for a number of reasons has proved to be impossible. It is in a non-conforming location close to the street, so that existing nonconformance is going to be eliminated.
Thank you. It's time to move on. I think we've all, there are no further questions from the board. So, we'll take this up again, discussion, decision, next week.
Just one more thing. I didn't say that we had a demolition permit. I said that we had a certificate from the Historical Commission. I don't believe that's expired.
Thank you. I don't know if our other two members are right there where they can hear that we're finished, or somebody needs to go fetch them because --
I'll get them.
Okay, Ralph is going to go get them. We're moving on to site plan review. Stephen Leaf is the applicant. Site plan review modification to add a seventh unit on 1.69 acres located at 56 Carriage Shop Road, East Falmouth. Mr. Costa for the applicant. Are those for each one of us, or what?
Are we doing loads?
We need to keep the plans, because we don't have them.
I don't know. Are these to be each distributed, one each, or what?
It was just for the file. It's a letter from --
We don't have any plans down here.
I was told to bring the plans tonight, not to drop them off, the planning. So, for the record, Matt Costa.
Two minutes.
Pardon?
Two minutes so we can get the plans out in front of you.
Okay, it'll take a couple of minutes to get the plans distributed here, so we know what you're talking about.
Oh, yeah. Solve all of those problems.
Oh, good. They're one sheet each, Brian.
Okay.
Okay, so, the two plans you have in front of you are, the first, the previously approved six-unit plan, that's the plan underneath, 2004 plan. And then what you have on top that everybody's looking at right now is the latest plot plan that is the as-built location for the duplex building. And that shows where the foundation is right now with respect to the driveways and pavement areas. That was the area, is the area where the change occurred. So, if you look at the two plans, you see there's a single-family dwelling, unit six, labeled unit six. That's switched to duplex. That's what that change is. So, last time we were here, we had a letter from engineering that had a couple of concerns when they looked at the project, looking at it through their typical site plan review glasses, and thinking, I think that they were looking at proposed plans and not understanding the full history behind the project. Right now, today, we have all the drainage for the project, which was designed to accommodate seven units, or designed to accommodate that size building that is in the ground now. The drainage is in the ground, septic system's in the ground. Three of the units have already been built. If you look on the plot plan, you'll see existing structures versus proposed. So, that shows you what's on the ground right now. So, I met with engineering last week to go over the details on it and prepared a letter outlining and articulating what the change was exactly. What's the difference between the two plans? Difference between the two plans is that duplex building. I met with Scott Schulter. He reviewed my letter and then asked for a subsequent letter from our engineer regarding the drainage and confirming that the drainage system that's installed in the ground can handle this duplex building. And it can. When we changed this project back to seven units and went to zoning board and got our approvals, we were always planning on seven units. And the building sizes that the system was, drainage system was sized for included the size of that existing duplex structure now. So, it was accounted for. So, we have adequate drainage, we have adequate septic system and approval from Board of Health for a total of eighteen bedrooms on the site. That's what we're going to, that's what we're going to build. The infrastructure's in, the pavement, binder's down, and we're here to modify our most recent approval. And that approval was based on, again, on that six-unit plan. So, we already have building permits, and there's already things under construction. And this was, again, a housekeeping issue that was brought up through attorney review of the process and the history on the project that had to do with the applicant's lender. So, we're here seeking your approval to modify that site plan approval for seven units. And to reflect, the seven units are going to be reflected on that plot plan you see in front of you. Those are the existing dwellings on the ground and what the two more, two more proposed structures are going to be. You see the two proposed structures? They're identical to what was approved on that six-unit plan. So, I think that covers it. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Is your garage, is right? Yes.
Brian, since engineering brought up these questions, has engineering looked at this yet?
My understanding is engineering is satisfied with some of the design calculations. So, the question in front of the board is they have shifted a unit, they've shifted some parking. The staff is fairly confident that there's no tentative impacts still in the bureau.
So, zoning is signed off on it? The engineers have signed off on it? The building commissioner has signed off on it?
Correct.
So.
Yep.
Yeah, I just have a question. This latest drawing is dated 3/18/14, which is the last week. Let's list a certified as-built plan.
Mm-hmm. As-building that, that foundation.
As-built implies it's constructed.
Just the foundation.
The foundation. That plan's for specifically that duplex foundation. That's what's needed to be submitted to the building department.
So, just the foundation that's as-built?
Well, it's as-built, also the other building that's on there shows existing structures. The purpose of that plan there was to as-built the foundation. That's required by the building department.
Process.
So, you can get your inspection in the back though. Previous plan, plot plan that was submitted was a proposed location. It actually showed the structure a little bit closer to the pavement, but there was a change made in the field that moved the structure further away from the pavement. You see in engineering's comment, they're talking about six feet from the driveway. It's actually twelve. There was a change in the field. So, that's, that plan's as-building, certifying that location of that foundation.
Yes, Ralph?
Yes, Mr. Costa. The, we talked, the engineering comments about parking and access, where he said that there appeared to be parking spaces between units five and six and seven. I don't see what that, where that is. This is five, and six and seven are over here. So, it's those parking places in there have been added. Okay. They're not, they're not on here. But they are on here.
That gravel parking area was added during the zoning board process. You'll see there was a backup, paved backup space that was there, that changed to a gravel parking area.
Okay.
But that, there was really no, it did not impact the drainage, or more appropriately stated, the drainage accommodated that.
So, you said the zoning board of appeals asked you to put that in there?
Yes. That was back on the original approval process.
When did they approve that?
When did zoning board approve it?
Yeah.
I don't have the exact date, 2004.
Oh, way back then?
Oh, yes, yes.
So, this, this is not accurate, that, this is accurate?
Correct.
That gravel parking area exists today?
More or less, yes.
Excuse me, I'm Stephen Leaf, owner of the property. It has been a long, somehow complicated process, pretty much at the end of the tunnel here, I hope. Pretty much everything that was, is on those plans were asked for either by the zoning board of appeals or the planning board. You know, as far as original plans were, just for the parking, for the units themselves, in, honestly, eight, ten years, I can't remember who asked for the guest parking. So, he said, okay, that was basically to be termed guest parking. So, that's why, that was --
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Or concerns?
Looks good to me.
And with all the approvals in place, what's your sentiment here?
Sign it.
So, any negative comments on this? So, Brian, I assume you will then write the decision on this? With everything in place?
As per plan.
As per plan? Then we approve of this. Everybody's satisfied with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you draft it?
Yeah, we'd see it at our next meeting.
Okay.
That's what I asked, is he going to draft it?
Yeah.
And then we would vote it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Do you know when that would actually be?
Probably, we have time next week to look at that, just as a draft approval.
Next week?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we move on to Dr. Lowe's. Definite plan to subdivide 4.57 acres into four lots located at fourteen and Lot Zero Chase Road and eighteen Low Way. You're on.
It was held open only for a written comment, right? So, I frankly didn't know if there's anything for you to say or not.
I don't know.
No.
There isn't. Okay. I thought maybe you had something to say.
Ask his question.
Okay.
So, the purpose of tonight's meeting was just for us to get guidance from the board. The waivers that were requested, so we can form a decision for you. Right now, the four-lot subdivision, and they're looking at, you're going to instruction, if you want to turn the page, they're looking at the instruction drawing on the second page. Looking for waivers. Before we drop, I'd like to give a chance for the board to discuss what was presented at the hearing, and we can present together for you.
Yeah. Principally looking at, with an alternative surface.
Construction waivers for the road that's already requested. You'll see that they're requesting a standard cross-section that's compacted gravel and looking for a certain width. And we're just here to hear the board's discussion about the plans and what waivers you care to grant or not.
I was moved that we'd grant all those waivers.
Rich, we can, all right.
Can we discuss them?
We can discuss them, but -- We can discuss them, but... We can make a motion, and there can be a second, and then we can discuss.
Was it no second, is there?
No, there's been no second.
I said I was moved that we granted.
I'd just like to discuss the access and the turnaround. As I recall, there was a comment from the fire department that they'd like to see a hard enough turnaround here, and this is a little undersized. For a four-house subdivision, it seems like we should at least follow the rules that the fire department...
Right, we should follow their desires on that.
I believe the fire department, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. President, I believe the fire department thought this was okay, but I think it was the DPW that had a problem.
There was a discrepancy between the two of them.
There was, and I think the problem with what's here was more with the DPW than with the fire department. In fact, they...
I think you're right, Rich. I think Rich is right. The DPW wanted it wider, and the fire department said it wasn't...
The fire department requested it.
They did, okay.
Lieutenant Trott requested a standard T-turnaround.
Okay.
Which is what we have.
Yeah.
On your definitive plan, on the construction drawings, turn, turn, turn the page.
Not the T-turnaround.
No, it's not a T-turnaround.
That's what we're looking at. So the fire department did ask for a standard T-turnaround.
What did the DPW then?
Wider road turnaround.
Yeah.
Look, the fire department is happy with the board.
I think the DPW were crashing, one of the fault cul-de-sac, fault paved cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's necessary, but the DPW, I think, wants a full-depth construction. On last year, again, just like on the, for the small plan, there's a note on the plan saying not to be accepted as a town. So there is a thing from your safety departments with regards to the T-turnaround, maybe you want to start.
Okay.
Well, I was, I was looking at this. T-turnaround, my comment is, because, that's what the fire department wanted, and I believe the fire department was satisfied with the road width, as long as there was sufficient clearance on either side of the road, you know, the actual...
Right.
...great road. So I would grant the waiver to that extent that the fire department, which is a 14-foot turnaround, but the width, I think that is being proposed by the applicant, would be applicable.
The width was a 14-foot width.
And I believe the fire department had no problem with that, as long as it was maintained on either side, sufficient room for trucks to come and go off the road.
Right. To, what was it, a four feet on either side cleared back, I think, from...
I think it was an additional two.
Was it two? Ah, here. Four, no.
Four feet, see, on each side.
There it is, okay.
Yeah. Overall distance.
Madam Chairman, I think it's important that we don't overblow this little side street coming into Chase Road and make it dominate. It's really just a small thing. I, I'm in favor of keeping it small and blending into the neighborhood and not making it the full width the same as the road.
Right.
And it would, it would, actually, Chase Road is kind of overgrown, and the trees are all coming together, it's really a quiet little country lane, and if we clear this out and make a highway coming into a country lane, I think it'll look silly. So I think I'm very much in favor of, of doing everything except for making sure the fire department is satisfied. I don't want to have anything to do with not telling them what to do. I think that's something I want to listen to.
So we want their full T-turnaround that they requested.
That they requested, but I'm in favor of the rest of the waivers that they've asked for.
Well, it's, the rest of the waivers are having to do with the width of the road.
Uh, pavement.
Yeah.
They're asking for a dirt road.
Alternative surface.
No sidewalk. No sidewalks.
No sidewalks, lighting also.
The big issues are, you know, the width of the road, it sounds like the board is satisfied with 14, two and two. 14, a T-turnaround as depicted on the subdivision plan. I guess the real big question is, is the board satisfied with the treatment of the road as a道路?
Yeah, the alternative surface of the road instead of pavement.
Instead of pavement.
As long as it's constructed as this drawing, that looks like a pretty solid dirt road.
The terrain is really not at all.
Yeah. And my understanding was that it was going to, the entire length of it was going to be reconstructed to these standards.
Right. That was testimony.
Also point out that any runoff that did occur would be entirely on one of the existing home areas, that's what they want.
Bob?
The testimony from the neighbors, I thought lends itself to what Jim said also, that you want to maintain the character of the area without changing it. So I agree with Jim allowing some of the waivers, with the exception of what the fire department would like to see.
Yeah, they didn't really want to see bright streetlights.
Right.
They didn't want to see all the trees removed.
Right.
Yeah, Ralph?
Right, they asked for nine waivers, and I, I think that we need to insist because of the proximity to West Falmouth Harbor, that denitrification systems be required for any new dwellings.
And I agree with you, that was brought up as well.
For the new dwellings.
The new dwellings.
Yes. I agree, I agree with that.
Were there any others that we missed, Ralph?
Well, I, I had that, I had the fire alarm, shoulder width, the streetlights, utilities underground, trees, sidewalks, road width, and road profile. Those are the nine I had.
Yep, so we've hit them.
You're waiting underground tilts, and a lot over there, because I guess there's probably existing ones.
Doug?
I have a question. When we specify that we'd like to see denitrification septic's used, what's the follow-up to that? Because if they put them in and there's no maintenance, is that part of our decision, that they'd be maintained?
In theory, Barnstable County has a registry, and in theory, they check on them and send notices out if they haven't been maintained. That's in theory, I don't know in practice.
Is there a policy for that?
The Board of Health is in charge of inspection, and they say that there's a requirement for that to be backed to them, because it's essentially a waiver.
So it's not a requirement for us to say that there should be maintenance?
Somebody else's job. Just, just a comment to, for us to put one of these in, get a permit, it has to go to the Board of Health, as you approved, and they put the conditions on about maintenance and testing.
Not our job.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the board?
Are there any other waivers that we're not discussing?
The big ones, you know, we always want to know what you want to do, is, do you want to pay? Sounds like it's unanimous, you don't want to pay, but you want constructed...
Full pen and draft.
The cross-section, because right now, the construction drawing just shows a partial reconstruction. So you want the full length of the road, the full width of the road reconstructed to that cross-section, and want a full T-turnaround.
Well, because you're digging enough to do a waterline, so you don't have to.
We can reconstruct it to the fire department's specification.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we're all good on this, if there are no more comments, then Brian can write up the decision, and we can vote on it next week.
You ready to discuss it?
All right, we move on to the planning board appointment to the Citizens Advisory Committee for the housing demand study. And I noticed all the eager people last time wanting it. Ralph, you ask the most cogent questions, are you interested in it?
I would do it, I would represent the planning board in this capacity, as long as the advisory committee understands that I have a lot of other commitments, and that my time to meet with these people is limited. As long as they understand that, because I'm not going to assume it and cancel something else that I'm committed to, to meet their meetings. So if their meetings can be conducted where I can attend and do what I'm supposed to do and represent the planning board, then I'd be willing to accept it.
Okay. Can you give Marlene your schedule? Because she will be the point person here.
I can do that.
Okay, and if that doesn't work, if it can't work to accommodate your schedule, who else would be willing? Oh, these eager faces, I know, you already said you've got seven ladies.
I missed one of them today.
How about you, Rich?
He's not, he's not running.
I, I'm like Ralph, I actually still working.
Yeah.
And I, I totally appreciate what he's saying about, you know...
A lot of other commitments.
I have commitments, you know...
Yeah. And Jim, you can't.
But I cannot.
Well, I, I thought I could, and then I thought better of it, when I realized I didn't.
And you also said you're the...
I'm a backup to somebody else.
Yeah, to the EDIC.
I shouldn't even have dreamed of doing it.
Yeah.
When is this committee supposed to stop meeting?
Sometime the first part of April, but we're almost there.
I was wondering if it couldn't wait till after the election.
I might not ask you to sign it.
I hate to say it, but Ralph, if it can't accommodate your schedule, I would do it.
Yeah, I'll do it if I can accommodate my schedule. But that's not to say that...
Say thank you, move on.
Hand it off to somebody else if it doesn't work.
That's, but that's why I'm saying... No, that's what I am saying, if Marlene can accommodate your schedule, then we would know before all this starts, and if she can't, then I could step in, if that's okay.
You would do, you would do it?
I would do it.
Oh, you would do it?
Yeah.
Okay, fine, all right, so I'll, I'll hand, yeah, okay. I'll tell her my schedule.
Okay, I'd appreciate that, thank you. Since everybody else so eagerly wanted to do it. Any referrals? I don't believe there are any. In general correspondence, we have two things. We have the Save the Date, June 5th and 6th, the Second Annual Cape Coastal Conference, and it was great the first time around. I would highly recommend that people think about attending, Bob and I did. Which, the date's June 5th and 6th. And the enrollment will be coming out soon, Brian said. It's State of the Cape implementing strategies to improve water quality and build coastal resilience. And they have local officials, municipal staff boards and committees, environmental organizations, scientists, coastal managers, and consultants there, and they really do. Surely.
And it's, and McQuaid?
Um, it was in Hyannis the last time. It is, okay.
We got an email on this.
Yes, we did get an email on it, I'm just bringing it up because we have the invitation card. The other thing that's in here is the Monopole, excuse me, the Monopole Telecommunications Facility slash Falmouth Development of Regional Impact Decision, and the case number enclosed, please find a copy of the Development of Regional Impact Decision for the Monopole Telecommunications Facility Falmouth Project that was approved by the Cape Cod Commission on March 13th, 2014. And the decision is in here, for those who wish to read it, it will be in the planning office. That's it, folks, unless there are committee reports.
Not tonight.
Is there any, is there any need for us to consider precinct meeting attendance?
I, I assume so, but I haven't gotten any listing of when they're going to occur. I have no idea.
Precinct 9 is scheduled, I know that because I'm in it.
We always get an email. And they should be next week, but I don't know.
Was that in precinct meetings?
Precinct meetings.
Yeah, the postcards went out already.
Yeah.
Postcards went out to, to town meeting members?
Oh, maybe to town meeting members, but there's always like an invitation to the various boards.
Well, it's for sure not on your notice.
Sure isn't, no. So, I need a motion then to adjourn.
I move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.